We will call the Capitola City Council meeting for March 10th to order. Can we begin with a roll call, please?
Councilmember Norton.
Here.
Councilmember Harlan.
Here.
Councilmember Vertrand.
Here.
Councilmember Termini.
Here.
Mayor Botorff.
Here. Councilmember Termini, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. City Attorney, can we get a report on closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Botorff, members of the city council. There were two liability claims on this evening's closed session, very brief closed session, I might add, the claims of Mercury Insurance and Julie McDaniel, which are also item C on this evening's consent agenda. There was no reportable action.
Thank you. Sue, do you have any additional materials received?
Yes, thank you. We received seventeen emails regarding item 9C, the appeal of the planning commission decision to approve a wireless telecommunications antenna at 1241st Avenue.
Thank you. That brings us to the public comment period of the meeting. This is a time when we'll allow anyone in the public to address the city council on any item that is not on the agenda. So, all we ask is you come up and state your name and write your address for the record. So, is there anybody who would like to address the city council on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and we'll move to city council comments. Comments from the city council?
We're gonna have a great birthday party for the library on Saturday, March 26th, from 12 to 2, and everyone's invited. We're going to have some people from our consultants there, that's representatives from our architectural consultants, they're gonna bring some prototypes of the designs that we're looking at, and we're going to have birthday cake, and refreshments, and music, and face painting, and the book bunny, who was also working as the Easter Bunny that day, and some surprises. So, bring your friends and neighbors, 12 to 2, on Saturday, the 26th.
Great.
In the evening news tonight, there was statistics that came out for the whole state, but Santa Cruz County, they noted that Santa Cruz County, that fifty-two percent of the population of this county has diabetes or pre-diabetes. It's pretty crazy statistics, and how it bases back to a city council or to a city itself is this, diabetes is based on exercise and food. And it should be a consideration in this community, and a drive to create as much exercise opportunity, particularly for our children, but for everybody in this community, as well as control of the type of foods that we allow served here. We have the ability to do that, we have never really stepped forward as a community and done that. I think it's time, with that kind of statistic, that's out of hand in the state of California, particularly Santa Cruz County, it's time for us to step forward as a council and the city to take land use actions and also personal actions to control food establishments in our community, but also providing as much exercise opportunity for our children as well as the people of this community.
Something else quick, I apologize, I missed the Zone 5 meeting this week. The pack-up was delivered a little late, so I didn't get it, so I'm sorry about that.
I'm gonna come back to the reports from the councils, I'm just gonna do comments right now.
Oh, thanks, that's fair, thanks.
Any comments? And now, the next item we do is...
Mr. Mayor, just a brief staff comment?
Sure, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to call everyone's attention, I think everyone's aware that we had a pretty significant storm here last weekend, and today, the North Bay is getting hit really hard as well. In fact, the flows that we saw in SoCal Creek last Saturday night were equal to the highest that we've seen in the last thirty years, and certainly the highest that anyone on staff here has seen while working for the city. Our crews were out, we had some flooding in low-lying areas, our crews were out working that night, the pumps at Long Way were working, we put some auxiliary pumps to help pump out the low-lying areas around Long Way. In addition, we understand that the county activated the evacuation Red Cross Center up at the community center. It was opened, closed in the morning, I don't believe anyone used it, but it was a good drill for all of us, and a good reminder of the power of winter, that it's not yet over.
Thank you for that report.
I do. Go ahead, Josh.
Just to announce the Village Capitola did have its first meeting, we're starting an organization to salvage the village in Capitola. Thank you.
And now, we'll move to the section of reports from city representatives on the boards that they sit on. Is there any reports from councilmembers on the boards? None? I just have one report, I just wanna repeat, if I didn't mention this, last meeting is that the metro bus system is under challenging times right now, and they're working on proposed cuts that may be coming to the bus service. Committees are working on these reports, and probably at the next meeting of the metro system, there'll be some announcement about what those cuts will be, and we will keep you informed on that system.
Sentation District has an item on tonight's agenda, and the, oops, we probably won't talk about, because it's on consent, but it's the approval of the Rosedale area project. So, I'm sorry it's taken so long to do that project, people have been waiting, those roads are in terrible shape, but they'll be repaving Rosedale, Carl, Alma, and Rosedale Court.
And Lower Bay.
And Lower Bay Avenue. So, that'll be a really nice project, and the Mobile Home Park will be resurfacing, Brookfield Terrace Mobile Home Park will be resurfacing as a separate project of their own, and they're gonna use an interesting product where the truck comes in, and as the pavement's ground up, they're gonna remix it and reuse it on the surface. So, it'll be a mixture of new and recycled concrete, so that'll be really interesting, and it saves them a little money to do that, but they have to hire a special contractor for that, so that'll be the project.
Yeah, one quick thing, please.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The copy of the rail study for Santa Cruz County of the 32-mile road corridor, there's copies of it up in the lobby of the city council chamber, and also in the public library, if anybody would like to see that report. Also, you can go online with the Santa Cruz Regional Transportation Commission and get a copy of it there, too. Read it from there.
Great. And I just wanna have the, we established the mayor's committee at the last meeting and for the CIP, and if I can get the Public Works Director to come up here, we'll just do a quick little CIP update. We met, it was the city manager, myself, Councilmember Vertrand, and Steve Jesper from Public Works, and discussed all of the projects that are in queue for the city for this year and going into next year, and I think there's some action going on at McGregor Park and 38th Avenue and the Stockton Avenue project, if you could just give us a little bit on that, please.
So, McGregor Park, we restarted that finally, I think it was earlier this week. Contractor's working on the abatement, soil abatement problems right now, he's been, luckily, the lead abatement turned out to be less than we had anticipated, and they're now working on, in the Dock Park area, so we hope to have that wrapped up, and probably gonna take another week to get that part wrapped up before we move forward, and get some clearances from the county and move forward with putting the fencing in and things like that, and putting it back together. Stockton Avenue at the Espinade intersection improvements are scheduled to start on Monday, weather willing, we'll see how that goes. We've sent a notice out to all the village businesses and residents, notified them of the park. 38th Avenue, we have signed the contracts, so I do not have a start date, but I anticipate probably starting in the next couple of weeks on the paving on 38th Avenue.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent calendar, this is items that we've already discussed before, that we usually recommend as one motion. Is there, anybody in the council that would like to pull any item from the consent calendar? Is there anyone from the public that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar?
Can I add, question, please?
Pardon?
F.
F, okay.
Question next.
We can pull item F, and we will address that, we will place that as item C1. I'll accept the motion for the remaining item.
Do we do it before then, it could probably be quick?
So, move, couple minutes. Move to set.
No, we'll do it, we'll do it at the end, let's see.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor of the consent calendar?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent calendar carries unanimously. That will take us to the general government hearing, we have three items on the agenda tonight. What I'd like to ask is, Marilyn, for your item, I would just want a show of hands of how many people will be speaking on that item tonight? Two, three. Okay, I know that to be considerate of your opinions, and the fact that you, that it sometimes can be irritating for you to be in a building with Wi-Fi, I'd like to consider moving that item up. The agreement I'd like to make with that is, is that I just wanna make sure that everybody that speaks, we're gonna give everybody three minutes to speak, and if you can agree to speak for three minutes, we'll prioritize that item and move it to the top of our agenda so that you don't have to be in the environment that makes you uncomfortable. Is that agreeable to everybody? Anybody who cannot do that, raise your hand.
Is that agreeable to everyone?
Then, we're gonna go ahead and move the appeal of the planning commission decision to approve a wireless telecom communications antenna to the item right now, and we have a staff presentation.
Before you is an appeal of the January 21st Planning Commission approval for a design permit, conditional use permit, and coastal development permit to install a new small cell Verizon wireless facility at 1241st Avenue. The proposed new small cell facility would be located in the Begonia Plaza Shopping Center at 1241st, which is Zone CC, Community Commercial. The blue line shows the subject parcel outline, and that star shows the specific location of the proposed antenna on top of the Begonia Plaza building. The adjacent uses are primarily commercial, being that this area is a commercial retail hub. The proposed antenna, although small and slightly covered, would be visible from the 41st Avenue corridor. Here's an elevation showing the proposed facility as viewed from inside the Begonia Plaza, and here's one from 41st Avenue. The proposed small cell wireless antenna would consist of a four-foot-tall cylindrical antenna screening device and ancillary equipment located on the existing Begonia Plaza building. The four-foot antenna, again, would be visible to the public. On February 4th, 2016, the city received an appeal to the January 21st Planning Commission decision from two members of the public, challenging the commission's decision based on improper setbacks and inadequate noticing. The appellant's alleged, first, that the proposed facility would not comply with city setback requirements for wireless antennas. The municipal code restricts antenna facilities from being located within 500 feet of a residential, public facility, or parks and open space zoning district. Additionally, the code states that in no event may a wireless facility be located within 300 feet of restricted zoning district. This graphic shows Verizon's proposed location at the Begonia Plaza, with a 300-foot setback ring around it showing how well the proposed location complies with the setback requirements. The red-colored properties represent the restricted residential and public use zoned parcels, and the green shows the allowed commercial zones. Verizon's proposal at 1241st is located approximately 240 feet from the Reposa Avenue residences due west, therefore, doesn't comply with the 300-foot setback standard. So, however, Munich Code Section 1798080, Exceptions to Restricted Areas, states that wireless facilities may be sighted in restricted zoning areas if the applicant can prove that one, the facility would eliminate or substantially reduce a significant gap in the carrier's network, and two, that there are no other viable alternatives outside of the restricted zones, which would also reduce said gaps. So, as you can see in this map depicting the allowed and restricted zoning districts, there are no other locations within Verizon's search ring, shown in yellow, while also meeting setbacks from restricted zones, so this is the best location within Verizon's proposed search ring. So, the city of Capitola contracted an independent telecommunications expert, telecom law firm, to provide a third-party review of Verizon's capacity and coverage report, due to the fact that much of this information is very technical in nature. The applicant has demonstrated to both the satisfaction of staff and telecom that there is a decreasing wireless data capacity at this location, and that a new small cell site here would help improve the coverage. So, the applicant also, or the appellant, also alleges that the project was not adequately noticed, specifically that the business owners at Begonia Plaza did not receive letters. So, pursuant to the Munich Code 1798040, it states that all property owners within 600 feet of a property of a new wireless communications facility shall be noticed, so noticing is required to be mailed to the property owners, not necessarily the tenants. Notices for both the original January 21st Planning Commission hearing and tonight's city council appeal hearing were posted at the Begonia Plaza site, mailed to property owners within 600 feet, and posted in the Santa Cruz Sentinel at least ten days prior to the meeting. Additionally, staff sent notices to each Begonia Plaza tenant for tonight's hearing. So, it should be noted that the city may not deny an application based on environmental or health effects of radio frequency emissions. Per Section 332(c) of the Communications Act, accordingly, environmental health effects were not considered by the planning commission in their approval of this project, and may not be considered during the appeal hearing. The top image here shows Verizon's original design proposal that went before the planning commission, and as you can see in the top right, there's a little cantina screening structure, that they call it. So, below is the design that the planning commission approved of at the January 21st hearing, per staff's recommendation, planning commission conditioned Verizon to revise their plans and submit a design showing two faux chimneys to help balance the facade of the building. However, after planning commission approval, the owner of Begonia Plaza had only agreed to a single antenna structure in their building, and will not accept the dual chimney look. Verizon therefore resubmitted plans with just the single proposed faux chimney over the antenna. Staff is amenable to this design change due to its adequate screening. So, therefore, staff recommends the city council uphold planning commission's decision to approve Project 15119 as conditioned.
Any questions of staff? All right, Termini.
Did we notice all of the property owners in Trade Winds Mobile Home Park?
So, I know it went out to all property owners within 600 feet, I would have to double-check if it went to Trade Winds.
But, the point is, if we mailed it to one resident in a park, we should mail it to everybody in the park.
Well, you may consider a park as a single owner and send it to the park, and yet, Trade Winds is a subdivided park, so each and every coach is a property owner.
They are, in fact, separate parcels. I know Linda Friday mails them out to each individual one, however, I will need to double-check tomorrow with her which actual locations got the notice.
Great, and I have a question of the city manager. You know, by now, we're, after many cell tower hearings and the FCC telecommunications act is constantly beating over our head and shoulders, what would happen, this could be a question for the city attorney, what would happen if this council turned this down?
Well, based upon the information in the report prepared by the expert that the city engaged, there's potential for Verizon to challenge that decision by way of writ of mandate. I wouldn't be prepared to opine on the merits of that, because you do have an expert consultant providing advice on that issue, but that's the alternative.
With regard to the Federal Telecommunications Act, is it powerful enough that this body could turn this cell tower down, and Verizon can just go forward and put it up regardless?
That's why they spend all those millions on lobbyists in Washington, D.C., that's right.
So, this could go up with or without our approval?
It could, if a writ of mandate were issued.
Thank you. Councilmember Termini, I think, just one point to clarify, I think that they would, that would be after the result of litigation.
Right, and we would be required to defend our decision in court?
We would.
What about if it was a design decision like that the planning commission had recommended the two chimneys, and they decided not to do that, and if we upheld that, would that be grounds for denial?
Based upon failing to meet the standards of the city's ordinance relating to aesthetics, that might be a viable basis.
Councilman Norton.
Did we notify the county residents within the 600 feet?
They were notified as well.
They were notified, too. Question, why, if we can't consider health issues with this, why do we have an ordinance that restricts these types of uses within residential areas?
In my opinion, the ordinance is a little out of date, it's in the process of being evaluated and updated, and that, I assume, will be one of the issues that will be looked at carefully when we bring forward a more, an ordinance that's more consistent with the current regulations.
Question? We'll go ahead and open it up to the public, if anybody would like to speak on this issue. Preferably, I'd like the applicant to begin this process.
Hi, I'm Marka Davilkova, I'm one of the people who have opposed this decision, and I'm a professor at Fiber Interest University, I teach physiology, among other things, and I'm fairly familiar with the health effects of these antennas, so that's partly why I'm interested. I have reviewed the available information, and the one thing that we, there were a couple things that we have not discussed, and there's a, I have a report that was produced for this council, it says here that Verizon does not demonstrate a significant gap in its coverage, it does not, basically, the, there's Mr. Ryan Safdie was, made this report, and he indicates that there is not significant gap in the coverage they anticipate, possibly, if people continue increasing their data use through their devices, that there might be some slowing of coverage, but there are cell towers very close to that location, so that would mean that, because when you, in your own ordinance here, wireless ordinance, right, you say, well, we do not allow these cell towers to go near 500 feet within residential areas, right, and you guys are deciding to place that really close to, closer than 500 feet, and, so you're choosing an exception, right, and you said, exception can be granted, but only if this would, the wireless communication facility would eliminate or substantially reduce one or more significant gaps in the applicant carrier's network, right, so as we speak at the moment, we do not have a significant gap at the moment, so you guys are choosing to grant an exception to your own ordinance against, you're going against your ordinance approving this, so that's, I think that's probably kind of the main point that didn't get covered here, you know, I could go into, you know, the literature on these effects of the cell towers is vast, right, and the functional effects, starting with probably insomnia is the most common, right, but here, I'm happy to leave this for you here, the most significant health effect that we see is the clusters of cancers, right, people get more cancer closer to cell towers, and they get them earlier, significantly earlier, they say, eight years, the new study indicates that it's eight years. Thank you.
Thank you, Marqueta, my name is Barbara Bush, and I want, I am opposed to this cell tower. Accountability, where is the accountability on this? Who's responsible for the damages as people get sick, sicker, and die? Who will ultimately say, no, stop, we can do this no more because it's a health risk and it's an environmental risk? And now Verizon, the city of Capitola, and the tenant, Stephanie Jenkins, must pay and be sued for damages. You're allowed to allow this to happen and did nothing, and your excuses no longer matter and can be used no more. I mean, what does it take to get to this point? We're operating with a 20-year-old telecommunications act from 1996, and we repeatedly hear we cannot consider health or environmental effects, and this is completely unacceptable. You're working with Verizon against the people of the community here of Capitola, and no one wants another cell tower, there's no one here that is asking for more wireless connection and more towers, and using the excuse that I'm afraid that Verizon may sue us if we don't approve their technology. Would you be afraid of people, of the people of Capitola that said, well, we'll sue you for the breach of contract and endangering the public? Either way, you look bad, and hiding behind a 20-year-old law that does not consider present-day dangers and violation of rights is unacceptable. So, you've entered into contract with Verizon, and you must be accountable for your actions, and you are all responsible for endangering the public of Capitola. The tenant, Stephanie Jenkins, is profiting here, thousands of dollars, and this should be made public, this is another issue. This is always kept secret from the public, but there's a substantial amount of money. I've gone around to the tenants in the Begonia Plaza, no one wants it, all of them are opposed to it, and fearing that their businesses are at stake. Many people have told me, walking around for the last month, that they intend to keep away from that area, and the managers and business owners are keeping records of how much business they're gonna lose, and some are thinking of not paying rent, that they're violating the terms of their contracts. I think everyone cares about the bottom line, so if it affects everyone's businesses, maybe then that'll do something, but fearing the profits and interests of Verizon is not an excuse for ignoring public health. It just has, people have to be held accountable. Thank you.
You know, I really believe in democracy, and the quality of life in a community needs to protect it, and that our right to health is... And that our right to health is a human right. And anything that threatens that or overrides that is incompatible with democracy and our rights. And Verizon is all over the county with numerous sites. One of the things in the ordinance here, it asks, let's see what the wording is, that they're to show where their other locations are, their map, and I didn't see it, and their future plans for sites. I do know, right near where this proposal is, 38th and Portola, has a 4G Verizon location. There's a huge cell tower on Capitola Road where Claire's comes in, where my friends used to live, and where another woman died who used to live there of cancer. So I don't see that map, that's missing. Or maybe I looked in the wrong place, that's required. And there's also something about doing the measurements of radio frequency radiation, the cumulative sites, I think it says within 800 feet. And I don't see that that was submitted. Some of the other points here, section 704 of the Telecom Act, which apparently they've changed the numbers, but it basically says, local officials, and this is very bullying, this is like, you can't govern the way you're supposed to govern in the interest of the community, there's something really wrong here. But it basically says, local officials cannot refuse placement of wireless facilities based upon environmental effects. The word health is not there, so long as FCC emission levels are not exceeded. Now, I'm going to submit to the council something I've submitted before, about nationwide violations of FCC radiation limits at wireless antenna sites. This is widespread. Some of the sites are 600% over what it's supposed to be. And there's a section here, wireless radiation can harm health. FCC fails to enforce its own wireless radiation limits. So that section says, it seems to me that's grounds for saying, this needs to stop. There's no proof they're even following their lax standards. The American public is not protected. Another point here on the ordinance is, there's a section in there about liability being required, liability insurance. Here's an article, Loits of London Excludes Liability Coverage for Radio Frequency EMF Claims. So who's going to pay the liability? Then...
Marilyn, you're going to need to wrap up, okay?
Okay. So I'm going to leave you with this, as well as there's a section in there about, as new studies come forward, you need to look at them because the standards, the guidelines are very dated. This is the BioInitiative Report, and it's just a summary of it from 2012. Twenty-nine authors, nine MDs, 21 PhDs authored the report. Experts from 10 countries, and it lists the countries, had over 2.5 million hits 30 days after it was released.
Marilyn, you can leave those documents with us if you'd like.
But what they do is call for lower exposure guidelines. You do not have to approve this site, it's a new one. Once they're up, co-location is mandated where other carriers come.
Thank you.
So I'll leave you with these, some of these materials here.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Sylvia Skepich. I'm a chiropractor. I work on 920 41st Avenue. I have an office there and I have four employees. And it's interesting that today I was doing my safety, my required safety education in the office, which is mandated. And then to think, I'm just here as a concerned citizen about the cumulative effects about the radiation, but to think that, you know, I'm exposing, I would be allowing them to be exposed if I didn't stand up. It takes a lot to get me out. I'm an emotional person, I don't speak well in the public, but I feel that it's my duty to be here. I'm sorry, I just get emotional when there's a lot of energy around something. And all I want to say is that the cumulative effects, it's not about this one cell tower. It's about all the cell towers, it's about all the smart meters, it's about all the cell phones. And the cumulative effect, I feel it personally, being a magnetically sensitive person, had to sell my home because I couldn't live in the effects of the added cell tower that went in, duplicating another cell tower, et cetera. But the challenge that it's causing to the human condition, I'm the canary in the coalmine and so are many other people in this room, and we're speaking, telling what is happening to the human condition if we don't do something. And we have to say no at some point. And it seems the condition of humans, that we wait until there's the tipping point. And why wait until there's the tipping point? The research is accumulating to show that there is damage and that the humans' cells can't take the cumulative challenge of the additions that we're talking about here. So that's all I have to say, is that I'm opposed to this. I want to register that as a community citizen, as a business owner in Capitola outskirts. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, my name is Joseph Light and I've been damaged for quite some time by these cell towers. I had a house over by Thompson Avenue, just behind the telephone substation there, that big blockhouse where they put in, after I bought my house in 1986, after that, they installed that huge monstrosity of a cellphone tower. And I finally figured out that that was what was causing my problems. I was getting weaker and weaker. Finally, I couldn't work anymore. And thanks to Marilyn bringing over her meter to show me that I was being irradiated terribly, I couldn't work anymore, lost the house, lost all my furniture, everything, probably lost about, I don't know, maybe $250,000 to $300,000 worth of equity and, and all the trauma and the stress of living near one of those things is just horrible. I've gotten neurological damage in my fingers now because of it. Some people are sensitive to that stuff and some people are not. I just think it's really surprising, not more, not more people are not here today to talk about their opposition. I currently am living in the Trade Winds Mobile Home Park as a, at the kindness of one of the tenants there, one of the owners there, who I'm helping to take care of her. So I'm sort of a resident, but if this, this cell tower goes in, I'm going to have to leave. And I don't know if I can actually afford to leave the county, but I'm going to have to do something to save my life, to get out of here. It's just a horrible, it's just astonishing to me and absurd and just grotesque that health concerns could not be considered as part of this proposal? What in the hell? I mean, I have a hard time walking because of the stress. It causes pain in my hip and I just can't tell you, I've got neuropathy, I can't sleep at night sometimes. There's a lot of things, painful joints, buzzing in my ears, all the stuff that you read about in the presentation that Marilyn gave. It's all true. And I'm semi-living proof of that. I don't know if it's going to kill me before I get out of here or not. But I actually have a copy of a presentation that was done by Dr. Carl Merritt for the Santa Cruz Freedom Forum, and I'd be pleased to give you each a copy of that presentation on DVDs. I'd have to find it in my library and pull it out and give them to you so you could look in, about the long-term effects of pulsed radiation and smart meters. Fortunately, I didn't go to jail, but I almost had to threaten somebody, one of these meter installers with a baseball bat, to get him to leave my property before I actually left the, had lost my house. He was going to install a smart meter and I, I had to threaten him. But anyway, please, consider the health effects and how many, how many cellphone towers do we need? I found this on the floor over here, I don't know what it is. It looks like somebody's cellphone that was over here. Somebody's phone, is that yours?
Okay, Joseph, you need to wrap up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like this? Come on up to...
Bruce Tanner? We're facing a global holocaust with the EMF radiation. People are dying. There are massive cancer epidemics from it. People are losing their ability of function. An expert on microwave radiation from the British military, a man named Barry Trower, has said that at current levels of exposure, which are projected to go up, the children in school today will be more than 50% infertile by the time they reach childbearing age at their current level of exposure. The idea that the FCC can tell you, the sworn officials who are responsible for the health of your constituents, that you cannot consider their health in what happens in your community is criminal. Your own council said they are lobbied with millions or more in funds in order to make sure that this continuing onslaught of technology can continue. We're now experiencing 4G technology. The 4G technology has been documented to create incapacitating injury to people the day that it's turned on in places around the world. They want to extend it through Santa Cruz County in these distributed antenna systems. And it's going to be hurting people, it's going to be hurting children. The FCC's limit on exposure is based on the heating of tissue. The heating of tissue occurs at levels which are something on the order of 10,000 times greater than what is documented by current information to create damage, serious permanent damage to the human organism. You are here, as leaders in your community, sworn to protect the people you represent. At some point, people are going to have to stand up and make a stand against this overweening federal administration, which has insinuated itself into our lives through fraud. It's a fraudulent administration. We have to protect ourselves. We're facing a time when this is going to be essential if we're going to even be able to continue to have a society. So I urge you to do everything you can to reduce the exposure of people in Capitola to this dangerous radiation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Gail McTunam, RN. And I'd like to read the biography of Barry Trower. He is a, it was just mentioned by Bruce. Barry Trower is a Royal Navy Microwave Weapons Expert and a physicist. And in his own words, this is his autobiography. "I trained at the government's microwave warfare establishment in the 60s. I worked with the underwater bomb disposal unit which used microwaves. In the 70s, I helped debrief spies trained in microwave warfare. My first degree is in physics. I specialized in microwaves. My second degree is a research degree. I have a teaching diploma in human physiology. I teach advanced physics and mathematics at South Dartmoor College. Author of the TETRA report for the Police Federation. I predicted the illnesses, this is what they use in Britain, is a radar system called TETRA. I predicted the illnesses which the officers now complain of. These are illnesses that occurred before my report was published and cannot be psychosomatic. At a conference in Birmingham, I said, 'This government, industry and government scientists will be responsible for more deaths of civilians in peacetime than all the terrorist organizations ever. The evidence I have is showing this is correct. I put my money where my mouth is and stand my ground.'" Barry Trower is quoted as saying, "To my knowledge, microwave or radio wave sickness was first reported in August 1932 with the symptoms of severe tiredness, fatigue, fitful sleep, headaches, intolerability and high susceptibility to infection. The paradox, of course, is how microwave radiation can be used as a weapon to cause impairment, illness and death, and at the same time be used as a communications instrument." This is a story that Barry tells about the Russians. "The Russians beamed the American Embassy during the Cold War and it gave everybody working in the embassy cancer, breast cancers and leukemia. And it was realized then that low-level microwaves were the perfect stealth weapon to be used on dissident groups around the world because you could make dissident groups sick, give them cancer, change their mental outlook on life, without them even knowing they were being irradiated." Barry Trower. So I think those are important things to consider. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Peter Pater. Anyway, it's kind of weird because on page 70, it shows where the antenna that they're planning on doing, they want to keep it as low as possible. It's kind, I don't know, that doesn't make much sense because if you want to reach a larger, larger population, you put a, put on a tower as high as possible so it reaches, you don't put a lighthouse, you don't put that on the ground, you put it up 100 feet or so. It seems to me that you're really, all you're doing is you're irradiating the people right below who are working in that, in that office building. Why not have it someplace else where it's, it's, is tall and it can reach a much wider area unobtrusively? Seems like right here, you're just, you're just, your range isn't very large at all. So you might have to add more, even more cell towers in the neighborhood because they don't, they don't reach. It seems like they're using the wrong approach of, of communicating with Verizon. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Peter. Did you want to write your name down, Peter? Is there anybody else who would like to address the council?
Good evening, Lowell Webb is my name. It seems rather strange that you are considering this at all. You've had fires at various apartment buildings and what have you here in Capitola from the PG&E smart meters. If you're not aware of that, you should be. The business that comes to my mind first is, hey, I'm from the government, I'm here to help you. I think most of us have heard that term. We also know that it doesn't always work out that way. What somebody mentioned about the embassy in Russia is well documented now, where they had a lot of problems with folks that came out of there, besides the secrets that they managed to come up with. I'm a little slow in this stuff, sorry about that, but lobbying is a wonderful thing. It used to be a grassroots thing. Now it seems that if someone's got enough money, they can put quite a bit of thing toward anything they want done. The lobbying of the communication industry seems to be at least as evil as that of the pharmaceutical industry with the vaccines and so on that they're pushing on everybody. And all of the monkey business with the fluoride that is going into so many places in the water and what have you. In Maryland, I believe it's Fort Meade, I haven't got for sure, the US Army has quite a facility there studying the use of microwaves for warfare. Give it another thought, folks, please.
Thank you, Lowell. Thank you, Lowell.
Good evening. My name is Rahmat Martin. I'm a 45-year resident of this community. I hold an engineering degree from Stanford University. I've worked in the telecoms industry for 30 years. When I left my last corporate position 15 years ago, I was a lot like the young millennials today. I carried a cellphone on my waist, sometimes two, pager on the other side. Made me feel pretty important. I was deep into a startup company when that Telecommunications Act of 1996 was put together. It was a bit of a joke as an insider, because we all knew it was written by the industry that it was intended to regulate. And then they said, wireless industry got everything they wanted in terms of, well, if there's anything important about considering the health and welfare of communities, we're going to move that off the table. We're going to only talk about whether it serves our bottom line. One of the things that's been mentioned tonight that you should take note of is that once a permit has been given and a little cell tower or a big cell tower goes in, and that permit is granted to one carrier, all the other carriers who care to compete in that market can come along, and without any resistance, no resistance is allowed, they can also put up a cell tower there. I've heard rumored that Stephanie Jenkins has sincere regard for EMF issues and that she takes steps to protect her community around her house and her family. And that's all well-enlaudable, but one of the things I'm noticing as I grow older is that people carry different colored glasses. And they pull out one set, and they look at an issue one way, and then they go down the street and put a different pair of glasses on and look at it from a different perspective. And, you know, we're all part of the human family. You know, Stephanie, where are you? You may care about your family, but what about the rest of the human family who live in this community? I can assure you, these health issues are real. While I was very dismissive of them for years, I could no longer dismiss them, starting about 10 years ago, when I began to meet people in this community and elsewhere who have accumulative effects. I think it's time, here in this largely progressive community of Santa Cruz, that some body, and maybe it'll be you folks sitting behind the desk up there, have the courage and moral fortitude to stand up and say, enough is enough. F you, the FCC, you know, take a stand. I don't care whether it has to do with health. If Stephanie won't understand the right path here and just turn aside from that contract and the money stream that's likely to flow from it, that will flow from it, let's take a stand as a community for the health of all of our citizens. Thank you.
My name is Joseph Light, and I realize I didn't sign this, so I'm doing.
Go ahead and sign your name, sir.
I don't want to get in anybody else's way.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Hi, my name is Paul Axe. I'm representing my mom, Teresa Axe, and several other people living at Trade Winds, who, by the way, have not been notified. They're all property owners, and if my mom didn't get a notice, nobody did. So you're definitely not complying with the public notice. I'm not sure how that affects this. But another point I'd like to make is, I'm not seeing any details here. There's an ocean of information about the harm that cell tower radiation, it's not really that disputed. On the other hand, what is Verizon losing if this doesn't go through? And you can't watch survival on your iPhone, you know, at the post office. I seriously question, and I would like to hear from you, what the details are, why this has to go through. At best, I think you're turning my mom's community into a guinea pig. And I also sense resignation in the room, kind of rolling over for big corporate interests. I'd like you to all fight that. And finally, for the sake of transparency, I'd like you all to say who voted for this and who voted against this, so we all know where you stand and maybe how you might change your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Hi, good evening. My name is Pete Schubin. I am here tonight representing Verizon Wireless. I'm available for any questions that you may have to answer. Just some points on some of the items that were mentioned tonight. With regard to FCC regulation, the maximum output of the site is 9.9%. That's ground, on the roof, building, any accessible place, 9.9% of the allowable limit, and that's what is submitted into documentation in an engineer's report for the city to consider. What that means is the facility complies with FCC regulations regarding emissions. With regard to the need case that was presented, at the Planning Commission hearing, we discussed the need case that's in the record. It's a demand-driven need case. There is times when there are severe limitations on demand. There's graphs showing, engineering reports with limitations on future demand as it's growing, where the impact of not having a facility is a degradation of service, not just data, but as voice becomes data, that's a degradation of voice service, not being able to make a call, an emergency call, a regular call, send or receive data, however someone chooses to use their wireless phone. There's a question regarding the area of coverage. Why isn't the site higher to cover a larger area? That's tied to the demand case for the facility. The gap in coverage is a neighborhood gap. The maximum distance that this site will serve from is about 1,000 feet. So it's just designed to serve the neighborhoods surrounding the site. There's that much usage of Verizon's service just in that small area necessitating the addition of this facility to provide service and fill a gap in coverage. And furthermore, when we were here discussing this project with the Planning Commission, there were some questions regarding the design and steffing. We've submitted that design that complies with all the conditions of approval to staff, both plans and photosims. So if you have any questions on that, I'd be glad to discuss that with you as well. So we request that the city council deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's decision. Thank you very much. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Pete. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the council?
I'd like to rebut some of these comments.
Sir, that's not, you've already had your chance to speak. Thank you.
We didn't know what he was going to say until then.
Hold on a second. There were, I've got 12 people that have come up and spoken, and one came up, and it's not a rebuttal, and we're not going to go back and forth.
But the facts are not accurate.
And likewise, he might think that some of your facts aren't accurate. We're not going to have a debate tonight. We have a public process. You're allowed to come up and speak. He has the same rights as you do, and everybody was allowed to come up and speak. What I'm going to do now is, seeing no one else that wants to speak, I'm going to close the public forum. We're going to bring it back to the city council, and we're going to discuss and make a decision based on the facts that have been presented. I'll take a question.
Are you going to identify who voted for this so far, so we can all see? Who voted for this? Or are you?
We have not voted yet, sir.
It's approved.
It was a planning commission that approved this.
This is appealed to the city council, okay? And we will vote, and we will vote by roll call.
I apologize.
Okay, thank you. So we'd like to, it's not.
We don't have a right to help. We don't have that right.
Thank you. Okay, we close this. We're going to bring it back to the council for discussion, and at this point, I appreciate that we have no outbursts from the public. We're going to discuss this matter. This is the process that we are going to adhere by, and at the end of this discussion, we're going to have a vote. Okay? Thank you. Who would like to start the discussion? Jacques, go ahead.
I just have a question. How is this case different than the one that was considered a number of months ago, where we're going to put one next to City Hall up on the road? How's that different in terms of the ability of Verizon to force us to agree to that application? And any other considerations where our hand was forced?
Fundamentally, the situation that you're asking about was whether the city was going to consider entering into a lease agreement with Verizon to provide a cell tower on city property. That's a completely discretionary action, and the city at that time elected not to enter into such a lease agreement. So it was, now here you're acting in a quasi-judicial role as basically the land use authority in issuing permits to a private development application on private property.
First of all, I am in a quandary myself. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone that's come here and expressed their detailed concerns, and in some cases, it's pretty obvious that this is something that's affecting you, and I completely accept that as fact. I have read a lot of literature. Maryland's provided me with a CD. I went through that. Someone alluded to someone from, I forget his name right now, from England, PhD, worked in microwave warfare. I read his brief, that he presented, legal brief, and some of the other literature that he actually wrote. And I've done some literature search on the internet. I am unable, I am not an expert, I am a physicist actually, but I'm not an expert to make up a decision on this. I do not have that expertise. Just because I know a little bit about the subject matter doesn't mean I have that expertise. The only thing I could discern is that this is a long-term thing, that for some of us, it may be more short-term, but for most of us, it's long-term. The other thing that seems obvious that it's probably more affected, affecting kids. So if you have a kid in a developmental situation, this is something that you have to protect your child from. For adults, it's much less clear. But these are things that I can only discern from things that I read, and I'm not an expert. But also, we're in a society right now that is totally dependent on this means of communication. This whole world is going this way. You could go out in the middle of Africa, and that's the only way they communicate right now. That cell tower is just an indication of how intense the use is in that small location. Imagine that. In that small location, it's so intense, they need what I call a booster. Okay? Now, just to give you a little idea, I've worked for 30 years in semiconductor business, and I worked within feet of microwave radiation. I mean, that was my job, I was a plasma engineer, did a lot of work in that environment, and I was never affected with fatigue or anything like that. But that doesn't mean other people aren't, and I appreciate that. But also, I have to balance the fact that this society right now is going in a certain direction, and until we know otherwise, this is reality right now. So that's sort of what the quandary I'm in at this point.
Thank you.
Well, I don't like the fact that they didn't want to do that extra chimney. I mean, that is, that's just a design feature. It's not that expensive. Planning Commission asked for it. You know, I think that's really wrong, that they did not want to have that. I think they should have been more cooperative on that. But I'm not crazy about these things either, but I, you know, I share Jacques' concern that we don't want them, but we use them. So what are we going to do? My first thought was, why don't they put a big one on the mall? And cover the whole city? Well, that's not a great idea either. And, I mean, we have, you know, we have them. I'm certainly concerned about co-location. You know, maybe one's okay, but maybe two, three, four, five, six are not. We don't know. Definitely, I think we need more medical research. We need more than one person talking about this issue. He may be an expert, he may be right, but we need a whole range of the US and European, around the world, medical community to address this issue and do the research needed, and, you know, sooner than later. We also need Congress to get involved, and I hope that all of you have contacted Congressman Farr, and your network of people to contact congresspeople. That's where this belongs, is in Congress, because they're the ones that made these rules about that and about other telecommunications things and other things that we don't have a handle on. So, you know, I don't think I'm going to particularly support it, because it's, I've talked to some of the neighbors, and they have some concerns about it, but, you know, we don't have the proof yet that we need medically. We have anecdotal evidence. We have a little bit of scientific evidence, but not that much. We can't consider it anyway. So we have to look at it from a planning point of view also. So, you know, I hope that they'll modify their design.
I'm a slave to my cellphone. I walk outside my house, and I leave my cellphone at home, I freak out. I want to go back and get it. And it's become a lifestyle, and I don't think you'll have people walking out of this community throwing their cellphone up on the stage here to give up their cellphone. So looking at that technology and how we've accepted it today, and also found a need for both, not only for communication, but for public service and for safety and for life, the amount of people that we save by that cellphone. Now, I'm also very aware that there's a large number of people that have health issues with wireless radiation, and I know some personally, and there's no question in my mind that they're affected by this. We have an ordinance that states that we must stay this far away from residential area. But like any ordinance, we find ways to break that ordinance and say, well, it's okay if this and this happen. I'm not convinced that we need another cell tower in our community, and till I am, I'm not going to favor this here. I'm going to uphold the appeal.
Well, I'll start with a statement that's not going to be very popular, so you can't accuse me of playing to the crowd. I may not personally ascribe to all the statements that you made here tonight regarding health, but it is my belief, and I've stated it before, that I am not elected to press my personal belief. That's not what elected officials should do. They should merely deal with the benefit of the community they're elected by. You know, we've been a slave to the Telecommunications Act with cell towers for the last 20 years, or almost 20 years. And I believe that at some point, we need to reject something, if only to test the process, and if only to make a statement of an objection, and this is my position, that we should not be preempted in our authority over our own community by anyone, including the fellow. Now, I see doom ahead with this effort, but again, even just as a statement, and I know we can't rule necessarily on the health issue, but what we can do is, based on the following, deviation from the approved design guideline, proximity to residential zoning, and the question of noticing may or may not have been 100%, making it questionable, I will move that we overrule the Planning Commission and deny the application.
I have another suggestion also, that we divide up the area and lock it and knock on doors and talk to people and ask them if they're getting drop calls, because then we'll have a sense of whether there's a need in the neighborhood. It's not that big of an area. We can certainly do that.
I don't think we're expert enough to do that, you know.
All they have to do is ask the residents if they're dropping, getting drop calls, if they need additional service and their cell phone.
If you want to stop talking to someone, go down the Warford Hill into the village, and as soon as you hit the trestle, everything goes away. So the trestle's a pretty safe place. place. Anyway, we can do that, but just as this motion, and this motion only speaks to the points made by the folks who appealed, and it's very clear, and again, the motive behind it is to, you know, any government, no matter how great, can withstand a little pushback. And, you know, we have to hold firm at some point, because we've always, and as a matter of course, every time we get a cell tower or a cell consideration, we see the Telecommunications Act and we approve it, and we don't even think about it. We've never even really considered making the effort, even if it's only to make a statement, even if it's only to make a cry out that preempting what we do is just not acceptable.
But I would like more information on this gap issue. You know, that's part of the application.
Any of us, any of us is free to knock on doors or make cellphone calls and see what we get.
We've heard from everybody. There's a couple of things that come to mind for me right now, and I'm positioned where I'm representing the city of Capitola, and as an elected official representing the city of Capitola, I have to consider all the residents of Capitola. If I ignore some litigation that puts the city of Capitola into a lawsuit, am I doing my job to represent the city of Capitola? I understand that I've heard comments from people in the room, and I'm not even sure how many people in the room are Capitola residents. As Councilman Termani mentioned, I am concerned about the noticing. The gentleman mentioned that he didn't receive a notice. That concerns me because it's not really clear. I understand that. And, you know, one of the things that we need to make sure we do before we make a decision is let everybody come and speak on it. And if people in Trade Winds did not receive this, that gives me concern, because when I'm looking in the room and I don't see a lot of Capitola residents in here, maybe they're not concerned about it. Maybe their decision is, is that they are attached to these cellular devices, and that's more important to them to have no loss. I've heard from all my other council members here, and they have concerns about not supporting this measure, and that disturbs me, because I believe that the applicant met the challenge. We hired an independent agency to look at it, and they came with the decision that there is a data loss, and they showed that as this usage is currently stated, they are right at the point of where they will no longer be able to stream the data, and they're going to be able to justify their claim. So they satisfied that part of the equation. The only other portion of the equation that there was, was the design, and I, quite frankly, I don't like the design that's there, and I don't like the fact that it was going to be a brick. I was going to recommend that if we did put a chimney up there, it would be a stucco chimney to match the stucco that's on the building. But what I'm posed with now is, is I'm feeling like we're going to take an action which, if we deny this tower, will bring, make us susceptible, because I've been to seminars on cell towers, and the laws, unfortunately, whether they were in 1996 and whether they were archaic at that time, these are the laws that we have to live with. When we sit here at this body and make decisions, we need to be guided by laws sometimes and by input of our citizens, and if our citizens can make us do something that doesn't violate the law, then that's in the best interest of the citizens. But if I put myself in a situation where I willingly enter into a lawsuit, and this lawsuit causes litigation against the city, then I wonder if I'm doing the job for the representatives of the city. So I'm going to vote to uphold the decision of the Planning Commission. I can understand that if this measure is turned down, it puts the telecom institution that's applying to this where they can either go away, which is what I believe most of the people in the room would like them to do, or they can serve us a lawsuit, and that will be our next decision. So, based on that, we have a motion on the floor and a second, so I'd like a roll call vote. And just to be clear on this, because we're upholding, the Planning Commission's decision is to approve the project.
The motion was to overrule the Planning Commission.
Right.
I'd like to say something.
Hang on a second. The public process is over. We're going to continue this up here at this end. We've already had a chance to speak. That portion is over.
She's ID'ing her soul.
Marilyn, I understand that. You know, in this country, there's a process, and we've done the process.
You didn't announce that it was over. I was waiting to ask the question.
Didn't, I closed the public comment period. Everybody was offered the opportunity to come up and speak. If you wanted to come up and speak, that opportunity was given. We closed the process. Everybody spoke.
So waive the process. Waive it.
Can I question it, ma'am?
I'm going to let you ask you one question. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. This very body here turned down a cell tower on top of it. You turned it down. There was no litigation over it.
We did not turn down the cell tower on this building. People came to us and wanted to know if we wanted to lease the space for that tower. We said, we do not want to lease the space. We never voted on the tower because, as a city, we decided we did not want to have it on our building. So the tower was never voted upon, whether it was approved or unapproved. The tower people could have come back and put it in a different location than we would have had to vote on it. That never happened. So these two cases, as the city manager mentioned, are entirely different. This is a, this is a private property coming to us and asking us if we want, if they could engage in a lease with Verizon. So I'm going to call for the vote. I just want to clarify the vote to make it clear that if you vote yes on this, you will be voting to agree with the Planning Commission, and if you vote no, that will be to not have the tower installed.
No, no. If you vote yes, my motion is to overrule the Planning Commission. If you vote yes for the motion, you're overruling.
Okay. I was going to say, it's to overrule.
Right. If you vote no, it means you want to uphold the Planning Commission.
Okay, then we'll reverse that. So this is to overturn the decision of the Planning Commission, so a yes vote would mean we're overturning that decision, and there would be no tower.
Correct.
And a no vote means that we would approve of the tower. Okay? Are we clear on that before we vote? And your question?
Oh, the other, the other option that the applicant has is to meet the conditions that were objected to, to do something, modify those conditions in the motion that were objections. He could modify the application to meet those. So that is possible. And also, I just wanted to say.
I don't believe that was part of his motion.
Oh, no, it's not, but I mean, it's.
Well, actually, it was, because one of the, one of the grounds for my motion was the deviation from the approved design guidelines, and hearing what Stephanie said, then I need to amend my motion to remove that in addition. The noticing, I have been, I have been informed via email by far too many all at once, the residents of Trade Winds, that the area that I was concerned with was his Trade Winds. All the residents of Trade Winds were in fact noticed.
But my point is, they could redesign, they could renotice and reapply.
Right. What I'm saying is, to make the motion solid, the basis for my motion has to be that it's in the proximity to the restricted zoning area.
Within the 600 feet.
Correct.
But you have to address the two conditions that they're allowed to apply for under that. They can't if they meet the other conditions.
I'm rejecting that concept, and using that as the basis for my motion is within 600 feet of the restricted area, because I can't with any conscience speak of the noticing, having been informed that noticing did take place in Trade Winds, and secondly, hearing that the applicant was willing to adhere to the original guidelines, that should also not be part of the motion. Follow me?
But if they can meet the other two conditions allowed under the, the application of reading the restrictions.
That has not been proven to my satisfaction.
Then, okay, then that should be part of your motion, so that if they want to come back and try to prove that, they're allowed to do that.
That's the basis of my motion.
So it's still possible for, to file a reapplication? But I just wanted to say to the opponents of the application, don't talk about fluoride. I'm a nurse, and I support fluoride. And, you know, don't talk about other issues. It clouds the issue. Some of us may or may not support those other issues. Don't go there. Don't go there. You're losing me when you talk about that, so.
So before we, I call for the vote. Just.
Could you change the motion? Your clarity?
Marilyn, we're on the same page. I'm going to go to the city attorney and have him restate it for us, so that everybody in the room is clear what we're voting on.
Well, I'll ask Councilmember Termani to clarify it if I don't have it right.
That's fine.
My understanding is that the motion was to overrule the Planning Commission, uphold the appeal, thus reject the application on the basis of the proximity to the.
Restricted zoning.
Restricted zoning, and not on the basis of the aesthetics or the other item that was discussed.
Correct.
Was, on the basis of?
That is correct. Okay. Proximity to the restricted zone area.
Just that, that general rule, and that the drop and the dip in the zone was not satisfactory. Thank you.
Just to be clear, that site isn't getting any farther away from residential zoning, so I think there was a comment made about possibly resubmitting an application. I presume it would not be for that location.
But if they met the two conditions that they're allowed to prove to us, they could provide that additional proof to us, and we would have to reconsider it and look at it in that light.
Very well. Motion is to deny it based on insufficient evidence to prove the data loss.
Correct.
Are we all, are we clear on that? Sue, can you please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Norton?
Yes.
Councilmember Harlan?
Aye.
Councilmember Bertrand?
Yes.
Councilmember Termani?
Aye.
Mayor Batov?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. The Planning Commission decision is overturned, and see if it comes back. With that, we're going to move on to Item B, which is a report on the Rispin, oh, no, yeah, we're going to go to Item A. I'm sorry. This is a, receive a 2015 Art and Cultural Commission annual report, and that is from, Mr. Larry.
Do you want to let them clear?
Sure, that's fine. We'll take a few minutes.
Yeah. Oh, you got, oh, at the end, at the end there. That one.
Oh, that one there?
Yeah.
I think she loved.
Can I ask Jamie if she's.
I know, I know.
You know what, there might.
And if it comes back, we do.
Well, they have a public image. I don't know how it's played out in cases you've known about. That's why I asked.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I get excited. I want to talk.
You are a passionate one.
I know, it's, I know.
Look at the building sort of newly.
I know, it's like the worst place they could put our old center. My fiscal therapist.
Way of life, way of life was right.
If it wasn't for this one owner, they would have probably had shot, because they were trying to.
Yeah.
So if someone, they could probably want to put it on the side.
I didn't see where there were cellphone, cell towers around it that they could actually creep and boost it up or something.
Yeah, that's what I could.
The ones around it overloaded.
I never had a reception problem.
Oh, no.
One of my friends.
I dropped it.
Where? My target?
But there's a.
Have a coffee.
Do you have Verizon?
Yeah.
It's an old coffeehouse. Yeah. Because it's overloaded. Oh, it's.
It's overloaded.
Okay. Are you ready?
I'm ready, Mr. Mayor.
Let's go ahead. Let's go ahead and, we're going to proceed with the, with the cultural.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Councilmember Termani, would you like to go ahead?
As your representative on the Art and Cultural Commission, aka the Fund Commission, we had a great year. Our purpose is to advise the city council as to the allocation of public funds and support existing and new programs for the arts, where they're located, how they're constructed, and the selection of qualified artists. The highlights of 2015, besides the wonderful addition to our mural, is our summer concert series, our plein air event, which was the first year, and it was met with, for me, surprisingly good response from the community. I expected it to be an okay event and something we could build on. It was a total blowout. It was terrific. I think we had the first and second place.
That's correct.
We own the painting by Charles Prentice on the left. That belongs in our city art collection now. It's one of the items that he painted, one of the pictures that he painted during the plein air weekend, and the other is a second. And this was done over the course of two days. I can't even begin to think how these are done, but they're beautiful, they're evocative, they're, they speak to us about our community in a single picture. The Twilight Concerts, 31 years of offering quality entertainment to the public, and if I can be so bold and speak for the chief of police, I'll get his head to come out. I'm at every single concert, and I have been for many, many years, and there are virtually no issues, no health, safety, police issues, and we're gathering 500, 1,000, 2,000 people into a small area, and it is just nothing short of magical. Sunday Art and Music at the Beach, this is an event that is revenue neutral to the city. It does not cost us a dime. The sponsor pays for the band. The band brings their own sound equipment. Our administrator for the art, Sunday Art at the Beach, rents out the booths, does her own advertising, and pays herself. So it is zero cost for six fabulous Sundays on the beach with art and music. Movies at the Beach, again, something that is paid for entirely by our sponsor. Sometimes it's green waste, sometimes it's pizza my heart. We show three movies. We show them on our bandstand. It is, it is after the classic summer season, so we get a lot of locals down there. You go down to the movies, you see everyone you know. Capitola Plaine Air, there's the Charles Prentice off to the left there with his first-place winning painting. We had a talk by the lady who judged the paintings at the Jade Street Community Center. We're probably going to move it to the New Brighton Middle School next year to give ourselves more space. We just jam-packed Jade Street. We meant for the event to be outside, but it started raining. We relocated everything to Jade Street, and it was still packed. The people followed the map and got there. It was a terrific event. Opera at the Beach. What could be a stranger juxtaposition of items with people singing grand opera at the side of the, by the side of the ocean. It was more successful than we ever thought it would be. We're still looking for a sponsor this year, so we need someone to step up and sponsor it, but it is our intention to do this each year. You can see the crowd that it gathered. It was culture, it was entertaining, and it was big fun. Children's Art Projects at Begonia Festival, at Art and Wine Festival. During Begonia Weekend, the Art and Cultural Commission sponsors and the friends of the Art and Cultural Commission, who sell T-shirts to raise money every concert, pay for supplies. Again, revenue neutral to this community and so beneficial. Our rotating art display, Maya Negri's work is up on the walls right now. It'll be coming down in the next month, and we have another artist in the wings. It's rotated and installed by our Art and Cultural Commission commissioners and staff, and it shows what goes on here. One of our real home runs, I think, is the informational kiosk we put in the village. It is artistic. It has a fabulous bronze sculpture of a sea otter. It's holding up very well. We use it for all events, not just art and cultural, but the BIA puts up posters, the Chamber of Commerce puts up posters. It is, it doesn't block anyone's view. We had concerns about that, but there was a lot of community input, which shows a tremendous artist to do the sculpture, and it was, as far as I'm concerned, the best deal we've gotten for art in a long time. Our muralists, Maya Negri and John Ton, executed the murals. We extended the mural this year to go under the overpass. One of the projects coming up in this following year is, we'd like to paint out the overpass, at the very least, sky blue, because the concrete overpass and the mural, they clash a little bit too much. We need to just incorporate it, make it a grand entrance into Capitola.
Well, let's go ahead with Steve. We're going to go to item B now, report on the Rispin Mansion Park.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item behind, before you tonight is an oral report on the Rispin Mansion Park, but also the Rispin Perry Park ADA improvement projects. There are two projects we'd hope to marry them together and go out with one project. As we go through this, you'll see it, we're going to change that around a little bit. I'll talk about the Rispin Mansion Park first. That was a park project to turn the Rispin Mansion property into a park. It was to restore most of the historical elements on the outside of the park. It did not include any renovation of the interior of the mansion itself. The council approved a conceptual plan back in 2014. We've been working on the final plans here, I'm sorry, 2015, we've been working on the final plans and construction drawings. We have completed the environmental review, and the construction estimate at this point is $871,000. Unfortunately, our construction budget of available funding is $464,000, leaving us a bit of a gap of $387,000. So the park, as it's designed right now, includes historic restoration throughout the park, addition of an amphitheater, bocce ball court, and nature kids play area, and also includes ADA improvements within the park itself. We did make changes from the original concept plan to the reflecting pond element. That was due to cost. The original intent of the reflecting pond was to fill it with cement and decorative tile, and then use rainwater and circulate it through there to emulate the reflecting pond that used to be there. Unfortunately, the cost of the water recirculation system was about $250,000, more than we had anticipated. We knew we were in budget problems already, so the project plans as they are now do fill in the pond and do have the decorative tile. It's in the elements within that concrete to come back and do the recirculation system at another time, but it did, we did not include that element in the final design as we went through this. Because of the budget considerations and design problems, or not design, cost problems, our recommendations regarding the Rispin Mansion Park project at this point is to defer the approval of the plans, and I'd like to engage the council in some discussion, get some input on how best to move forward. Do you want us to move forward with developing a phased development where we'll build what we can with the funding that we have right now, or should we kind of delay out and see if we can find some additional funding? That's one set of questions. Moving, so just to kind of give you a visual, this is the final plan. This is Wharf Road. The mansion building itself is down here. So we have the fountain. Here's the fountain we were talking about. The project does include, this is the reflecting pond. The reflecting pond is where we've modified from our original scope of work. There is a small fountain here that we will be refurbishing and using recycled water for. That's about a $70,000 project, as opposed to about a $250,000 project to do a recirculating system for the pond itself. Here's the bocce ball court, the rose arbor. The park plans in coal also include renovating the grand stairway that go from the pond area down to the mansion itself, an amphitheater here, redoing all this flat work in this area so that it is both rejuvenated and ADA compliant, including some game tables here, renovation of the sundial here and the overlook here. This is the scope, and here's the children's play area. So at this point, like I mentioned, we're recommending we kind of defer this project and figure out how best to move forward. The tie to this is the Rispin Perry Park ADA improvements. Basically, the city is under an obligation to replace all the ADA ramps that go back through both the Rispin property and Perry Park property. The item that's been continued from the consent agenda is approval of the first phase of that, and now we're moving forward with the second phase of that project. Our original intent was to kind of put this all together as one pathway project in with the park project. But at this point, we're recommending that we pull the pathway project back out and move forward with that. The plans are prepared. We are ready to go out to bid on that. The construction estimate is $325,000, and the original project budget was about $330,000, so we're right on here. With your approval of the plans and specification estimate tonight, we'll start advertising for bids and open bids on April 13th. And just, this isn't the best map. I apologize for that. This is the mansion down here. So this is the scope of the ADA project. We will go from Wharf Road through the garden area with the plans that are in the garden, so we're not building a pathway we're going to tear out. We've actually taken the plans from the park project in this area and combined them in with the, for the ADA project. So we're building this part of the pathway that will be part of the park project. Then continues down to the Rispin Perry Park pathway here, and then down to the Silk Hill Creek Bridge down here. We've got two different engineers that have worked on it. Bowman and Williams is working as a subconsultant to the landscape architect on the park project, and they've done the plans that go from here to here. And then Kenley Horn, who did our first phase of the Rispin ADA improvements, have done from here to the creek. They've worked nicely together and have given me one plan set that we are now prepared to go out to bid on. So I want to go through the financing a little bit. It's, we're kind of moving things around in order to meet some grant deadlines and some other deadlines. So as originally proposed, the Rispin Park was funded by a $384,000 grant from the CDBG. That grant funding needs to be expended by June 30th of this year. The general fund did contribute about $200,000. I'm sorry, that's a typo there. It has $100,000 for engineering and $100,000 for construction, bringing that budget up to $584,000. And again, we have a funding shortfall of about $387,000 for that project. Rispin Perry ADA 2, which is what we're going out to bid now, and number three, which will be actual, the bridge structure itself and up to Riverview Drive, has about a $600,000 budget. So our total funding sources of $1.184 million. How we're going to move the funding around is, a big part of it is we're going to take the CDBG grant and pay for a big part of the Phase 2 of the ADA improvements, leaving only 84 up here to pay, which will be for the engineering. The general fund money that was then identified for the ADA improvements will backfill the grant money and $500,000 there. And we also have successor agency money that will remain in the ADA improvements. We have discussed this plan with CDBG. They're completely fine with it as long as it's related to the park projects. Since they're so closely tied, this will allow us to meet our grant deadlines. And that is my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Steve, I'm all in favor of the phasing idea, because if we just delay everything, it just becomes another delay, but that's another story. I'm also in favor of not dealing with anything with regard to the fountain, because the art and cultural commission is really keen on taking the entire fountain to their bosom and bringing as much art money as possible into it and turning it into an art project. So that gives you a little bit of help. Do you foresee being able to take out enough elements, I don't know, bocce ball court, kids play area, amphitheater maybe, whatever, and still be able to open this to the public with the money we have? Do you think we can back that 385 out and still have something where we can get the chain link fence down, we can cut the walls down, I mean, do all the things to make it at least accessible to the public, maybe not with all the amenities?
I think we're going to face some tough decisions on trying to do that. Either we're going to take out a lot of the park benches and drinking fountains and things like that, which really make it a complete experience. I certainly think we would have to take out the amphitheater. You know, maybe if we can figure out something with the arts, we can do something with the fountain. The rose arbor would be something we might probably have to lose. These are the big ticket items. There's really not enough if we want to focus on restoring the elements that are there. Restoring the sundials and some of those items, which I think are key to getting the park open and making it a project that's about $183,000 of its own. So do I think we could put together a project? I think it'd have some obvious holes in it.
It may not be a complete experience, but what I'm trying to get to is, will it be safe?
It'll be safe, and we would have it open to, down to the mansion area, yes.
So it could possibly become open to the public, but just without some, without the complete experience, as you called it.
Yes.
And that, does this, does the part we have money for and that we're going to vote on tonight to go out to bid, the ADA improvements, the path that runs up and comes out on the Wharf Road?
Right.
That doesn't include any cutting down of the walls?
That does include a removal of one small portion of the wall, because we're...
You're coming out onto the street.
We're coming out of the street in a new location, so...
Right, but it doesn't include the cutting down?
No, it does not include any of the removal here, just the part that was going to come out anyway.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question?
Steve, just a couple of design questions. I see most of the ADA path is separate from the regular pathway. It's a separated area. One of the design nightmares that Perry Park nauseates me. And what it is, it's a series of ADA ramps is all it is, and nothing is ADA, but the fact is, is they ate that whole area, and it doesn't look like a park. What it appears here is, this pathway, the ADA pathway, even on level ground, has handrails on both sides of it. Is that a requirement? I don't think, that's not a requirement by code.
No, I think the flat areas, no, we are complying with the codes. So if it's over 5%, it has a handrail, if it's over 83%...
If it's less, well, as much as possible, let's please don't do that.
Right.
That just takes away from the whole, I don't think it's a good experience for an ADA person. The other question I have is, it has five, four and a half feet between handrails. Unless you have passing areas or turnouts, two wheelchairs can't get by on that. So just a thought. Unless there's some kind of turnout. Okay, thank you.
Open it up to the public. Any comments on this project?
The project, the overall project, I have more comments on, but on this particular project, I think it's, I don't think it's really necessary, because if you opened it up as a hostel, we would have done that, a lot of that project, because that's what we did in Santa Cruz. Santa Cruz, coming into the cottages, which is very similar to what this project, the whole Rispin project is. Us being a leaseholder, made all the improvements. The city, the only thing the city provided was a low-cost lease, and also we'd have to pay for a plan checking and so forth. But other than that, we did everything, and we raised the funds, and we spent about a million and a half dollars on this particular project, renovating seven buildings up to current standards, okay? And then operating it as a city park, except at nighttime, and it's a hostel, okay? So it's accessible daytime and nighttime, although it's not, it's mostly flowers and trees and bushes and so forth. There's really anything else there. But it seems to me that similar things, if I would invite the city council members, Mr. Tamini, he's the only one, as far as I know, who visited our spot so far. I would invite you guys, two people, come and check us out and see what we have done without, basically without any cost to the city. Now, too, the city hasn't made much money off us either, but at least we're putting up $10,000 overnights a year, low cost. The city of Capitola has four hotels, motels, I think maybe five, and I don't think you can find anything for less than 200 bucks a night on the weekend. And we are $28, I believe, for members to stay at night, and we do have private rooms. And it's, there is no low-cost place for less than 200 bucks a night in the summertime anywhere in, basically in the county, at least not in the cities. And it's, and at least we're putting up school groups all the way from the valley and so forth. Now, we're not putting as many school groups as we do, did on the weekends, because there's nothing for travelers to stay in Santa Cruz for less than 200 bucks a night. And so we are cutting back on school groups. It would be nice to have a second facility. Beautiful as Rispin is, or it can be, I mean, this is a wonderful piece of property, and it just makes me sad that since 1960, it hasn't been utilized. It seems like it's a waste. If I find the money, and I'm trying to find it, I would like to have some kind of assurance that maybe we can open up as a hostel and go ahead with this project. And I think my time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter, for your comments.
Can I respond to Peter once?
Sure.
Peter?
Yes?
Here's some facts. That building is not a building. It's a shell. There's nothing left there. You would have to take that all the way to the ground and build back up. So if that's your plan, keep at it. But don't expect to ever use that building, because it's not a building.
We have to rebuild it the way it is.
Nothing, there's nothing in there.
It's sometimes cheaper. That's what we're doing at Fort Worth. We have a building. It's a cement block building, and there's so many restrictions on it now for earthquake safety, lead, asbestos, everything else, that we're actually going to take this building, this cement block building down. It's going to cost us $17,000 just to take it down. And rebuilding is a wooden building, because it's much easier to get bids on wooden buildings than on cement block buildings. And that's what we're going to do, and just take it down and start from scratch. And I think...
You've got to remember, that's a story building.
I know, and we asked one of the...
Peter, that was just for information, okay? We're not going to debate it. He wanted to share the information.
We asked those buildings at the company of the cottages. It's a historic, it's on a historic register, company of the cottages.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing that, Dennis. All right, we'll bring it back for the council for discussion. Who would like to?
Well, first of all, I just think we should move to let the ADA improvements go out to bid. The ADA path improvements, that's a no-brainer. And I think we should also instruct staff to come back to us with a phased program, to build what we can with the money we have, and then move forward from there. That's my motion.
Second?
Well, I was going to ask if you'd mind splitting those, so we can have a discussion on the phased.
Have a discussion on all of it, or?
Well, I, I'll tell you what, I'll do one motion, ADA paths, we have the money. We have to spend the CDBG grant, and that's my motion.
Motion, is there a second on that?
Second.
Second, okay. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Part two?
Is to have, direct staff to come back with a phased plan with the money we have budgeted for this, and keeping the 279, or whatever it is, shortfall for the future.
Any mention of the Art Commission?
Well, I'm going to leave that to the phased plan. They can work with the Art Commission. They can see the things they can keep till later, but I think that our real focus should be to get as much built with as much money as we have and get it to the point where it's open to the public.
Second, and I'd like you also to look to see if, isn't there some, I didn't do very much work on this, but isn't there some area that we can borrow some money from in the budget that we're not going to be doing for 12 months, a project, we're not, we may have money plugged in there in the CIP or somewhere, or some other, I mean, we hate, I hate to say this, but we have borrowed from the interdepartmental funds before and from the equipment stores and things like that. So we could be creative and borrow a little money like we have before for something. We're not going to be buying cars in the next six months.
That could come with the phasing plan.
There's some money there we might be able to put together to move around a little bit.
Budget time is coming up, so we can take it into advisement.
We'll come with a package of options for you guys to consider, both phasing and...
Borrowing.
At future phases, what kind of funding may be necessary, and if there's something available, we can come. So we'll try and put together a complete package.
I totally, totally, totally agree. It would be wonderful if we could do it and get it done and not phase it. And if we can borrow the money from those other accounts like we have before, we'll pay it back after we pass the budget, then maybe we can look at that.
Dennis, any comments?
I'd like, thank you.
Jack?
I agree with Stephanie.
Before I call for the vote, I just want a couple of comments. This Rispin project predates me even knowing the town of Capitola exists, okay? Because I'm so new here, all right? And the one thing that I want to caution, no one wants to open that Rispin more than myself, but I want to caution all your euphoria with the fact that I think that we would do ourselves a great disservice to open this park and not open it right, to go in. Stephanie, I know you want to open it, and I remember Dennis wanted to, when I was campaigning, Dennis just wanted to take the fences down, and we know that it's an ADA liability nightmare there. So I love the enthusiasm this council has for that, so I would like to funnel that enthusiasm into what Stephanie alluded to, is I would like to direct staff to find money, okay? I mean, come with, you know, we have a lot of CIP projects. We have some CIP projects that may stall. And I think that we do the citizens of this town a great service if we get that park open. But I do not, I just want to say, when you come back, I know you want to get it open. I am totally opposed to yanking this and yanking that and no water fountain. I know you want it open, Mike, but I'm telling you...
Let's not, let's not not get this open to the public for, because of a sundial, a bocce ball court, and a kids' play area. These are all standalone items that we can do piece by piece. What I'm trying to do is, with every dollar we have, be able to look at Steve and say, "Steve, do all the hardscape, do all the restoration of the railings, do, I mean, make it..." And now, during budget time, we'll start to scratch for money.
Well, I, like I said, again, I applaud your enthusiasm, and I'm just worried about going back in and doing all that, once we've opened it, makes it more of a challenge. Right now, we have a parcel that we have complete access to. We can get all the right people in there to do it. The challenge for us is prioritizing the money. And I agree with you. When we go to that budget process this year, if you look at it, I think we, if we all stand committed to doing that, we can make this project...
In the construction business, there's only one thing that can stop a construction project from going from start to completion.
Besides Indian bones?
Never starting it, okay?
You know what, I am going to challenge staff and public works to come back, and we are obviously going to have a lively discussion when this comes back.
We're all feeling love.
And I'm thankful that you just split it in two, so we at least have something concrete coming out of this.
After the word.
So the motion, there's a motion, there's a motion, a second for staff to come back. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and thank you for that discussion. So at this point...
Mr. Mayor, this warrants some explanation.
Sure, I'd love to hear it.
I wanted to let you know that a member of my family is an employee of earthworks, and while that does not preclude them from doing the excellent work they do for the city of Capitola, I feel that even though technically I could vote on items like the notice of completion or the award of a contract, I feel it's best if, you know, anything that involves earthworks that I refuse myself on.
That's fabulous, and...
An abundance of caution.
See you later.
See you later, and thanks for taking this at the end. I'm on the way out.
Good night.
And at this point, Mr. Petri, you can come up. As soon as Councilman Turman leaves the room, we'll hear your concerns on this matter.
Enjoy, Peter. I'm sorry if you're missing.
Come on up. This is your item F that you wanted to pull.
I think I already had my say, so I'm not going to take you guys any longer. If you have any questions, go ahead and ask me some, but...
We're just going to award the money for the people that did the work. That's all this is about. If you don't have any problems with that, then we'll go ahead and vote. Go ahead, okay?
Move the recommendation?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and with that, we stand adjourned.
I haven't announced, I know I haven't brought the other two items up that I wanted to bring before the council, but I'd like to consider at maybe the next meeting or some other time, just a brief discussion on the noticing requirements, and maybe we'll want to adjust it a little bit. And the other...
I was going to say, can staff come back to us with some noticing guidelines?
Well, we know what, yeah, we know what they are. I'll just bring it back to us, and we'll see, we'll look at them, and then we'll see what kind of adjustments we would like to make for them to make, so we don't get in this quandary.
I have similar concerns when someone proposes to us that they did not receive a notice, and whether it is an individual lot, like a mobile home, I don't know the rules on that, but it does make us a little, so I concur with that.
And my other announcement is that on my bucket list, I don't, stop me if I've already told you this, was to go to the DMV, which has a beautiful exhibit of Capitola plein air paintings by an elderly lady who's now passed away, and they're wonderful, and some of the old timers knew her and saw her. She used to sit outside and paint all the time, and I forget her name right now, but I always wanted to stop and buy something from her. So I've always wanted to do this. I stopped there, and I met the manager, and I said, "Don't ever get rid of those paintings. If you don't want them, we'll take them. The city would love them, or the museum would want them, or we'll give you some money for them." Her son donated them to them, and said, "Don't ever give them away." So I'm going to contact him directly, because, go in there sometime if you want to check it out. They've been in there for 20 years, and they're watercolors and maybe some oils too, but they're far away, so you don't see them. They're not fabulous, but they're part of our history, and so they might, some of them might be really nice. Maybe they would loan them to us, I'm sorry, Mike's not here, but I was thinking, maybe they would loan them to us for an exhibit in here, some of them, for exhibit in here. That would be neat.
Are you going to follow up on this?
Yes, I will.
I love the enthusiasm, so we're going to...
Yeah, I'm going to follow up on that. That's on my bucket list.
I don't want to burden staff with this.
No, 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 I'm going to do it.
And Mr. Mayor, I will point out, you know, I apologize, staff was a little flat footer on the question about the noticing. We did come to an answer during the course of the deliberations. However, since it appeared that the direction, the trajectory of that wasn't there, bringing out information that the noticing had been complied with, and everyone within 600 feet had in fact received the notice, didn't seem like that was real useful information to bring up at that point by the time we had that confirmed.
And just for clarification, if we noticed the park and we noticed only the residents within 600 feet, there are some that might be residents that were outside of the 600 feet, and therefore, they wouldn't get the notice.
That is correct. The 600 feet include 97% of the park, but there were a few lots.
Because they all have separate APNs.
I understand.
They're just like an idiot, like...
But when you draw the circle, there could have been some...
There were in fact probably 10 of them that were not included. The rest of the park was, again, you know...
The other part...
But the other point I think everyone should be aware of is that we have lots of noticing requirements, but very different, so that specific 600-foot radius is actually relatively unique. And for coastal permits, there's a different radius. For CUPs, there's a different noticing requirement. So, you know, I can work with Councilmember Harland, but the noticing requirements are a code. The city clerk and I actually put in a bit of effort trying to create a cheat sheet for it, and I think when we hit page number...
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five or 30, we decided that we were probably better off just going back to the code and researching it ourselves. So I can work with the Councilmember Harland and show you. There's obviously some that we use a lot, but there's also, there's a ton of different noticing requirements for different types of things the city may or may not do very often.
Jamie, when we do noticing, do we mail it to the property owner and the resident both? Is there dual mailing?
No, not always.
Not always. So in specific, some of the noticing specific to the wireless, it says the property owner. It's in the code that it says 600 feet to the property owner. I'm trying to see if there's noticing requirements. Do we have anything that's for all residents, that either the city clerk or Katie?
Not that I recall.
I know that in redevelopment law, that's where I cut my teeth in public service, was doing redevelopment law, there were in fact some noticing that, you know, for specific types of redevelopment activities, you had to notice all residents.
And I don't know how difficult that would be, that what you have, particularly with a city like Capitola has a high percentage of renters, unless they're registered voters, there's really nothing on the radar for them. So if we did mailing to the residents, because we have an address book, address list, and the property owner both, I know it increases the mailing, but you'd be sure that both parties, and it could be that lady doesn't live here, maybe she has as a renter.
Right. And I will note that we are going to be looking at an entirely new zoning code here shortly, and in that is the noticing requirements for each and every, and so, you know, council members can bring that up and take a look at the noticing requirements for any specific permit and identify if they think that's right, or we should cast a broader net in one way or another.
And the applicant pays for that, right?
Yes, unless we're noticing something about, you know, adoption of one of our ordinances or something, but in private development, that is the case.
One last question from Councilmember Petri.
No, you alluded to the study you were doing with Susan, so you mentioned it. That's what I was going to bring up.
Oh, yeah.
Doesn't look like you're going to finish it, but...
We determined that it was less helpful than we had thought it was going to be going into the project.
With that, the meeting is adjourned. Good night.